Welcome to our December 7th, East Greenwood Central School District's Board of Education Meeting. Mr. Buno will not be here tonight. Mrs. Curt will not be here tonight. And Ms. O'Brien will not be here tonight. Everybody else is here. I'll start off. If everybody could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the public who stands on the nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. This past weekend, we participated in the annual bell ringing outside of Walmart. Every year, Student Council collects money and donates it to the Salvation Army in honor of a former Columbia student who sadly passed away. We love to participate in this event every year as it spreads joy to the community members and brings people together for the holidays. This Friday, Student Council will meet at Walmart again to shop for the Adopt a Family program, which will also provide gifts for families in need this season.
We also had our yearly holiday decorating last Wednesday after school and celebrated the holiday season with Christmas music and a pizza party. Finally, we will be hosting a Winter Spirit Week the week before the holiday break to spread holiday cheer among the students and faculty. Thank you very much.
Thank you. December 21st. December 21st. All right. We'll see you December 21st. All right. All right. Approval of draft meeting minutes for November 21st. I believe everybody was here. I'm going to kick myself out.
We do that all the time, Mike.
All right. Need a motion to approve November 22nd draft meeting minutes. Joanne, Michelle, any all in favor? Will be sustaining, will be injecting. Good. Thank you. Board forum.
Mr. Don. We're good.
All right. Before we move on, I do would like to take one minute, moment of silence today. It's December 7th, Pro-Harbor Day, almost 81 years ago today. So if we could just take a moment of silence and remembrance, I would appreciate it. Thank you, everybody. Reports and presentations, I will turn it over to Superintendent.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome, members of the board, members of the community, and folks that are participating via the community. We are still in the process of preparing our information for our next board meeting regarding the issues involved with our next capital project. Today, basically Linda Wager and I spent all day in meetings. This morning, we started with our librarians. You know that the library media specialist came and they proposed some program goals as part of their program review. Included within those goals was to look at some of their library spaces for potential modernization. The librarians came well-prepared with a presentation, which they shared with us involving every building. We're going to be facilitating, our architects were here, we facilitated that information to the architects, and they're going to be putting together some information to include the library, the librarians' input into the process. Principals attended as well to support the librarians, and I think it was a good rich discussion, and hopefully some of that work will go into the next project. Additionally, we met with our coaches and our phys ed teachers just before this meeting to get some input into what is being proposed for our athletic facilities. You know that in 2018, we did an athletic placement study, program study. We want to update that, make sure that the information that we put into the building condition survey and share with you is current information, not only in terms of the scope of work that needs to be done, but also the costs. So it was a good discussion we had at 5:30 this afternoon, facilitated by Ryan Jones and Paul Pickle, and that information is going to be put together and shared with our architects as part of our reviews. Additionally, we are also trying to move forward in completion of the current project that was approved in 2017, and we reached somewhat of a milestone in which we were able to wrap up all of the information that was needed for Phase 2. That information has been coordinated by Linda Wager and submitted to the State Education Department, and she's provided a report that I want her to share at this time because it gives us a nice example of how building aid works and how that aid will be flowing back to the district over the next 15 years.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. So Phase 2 of our $39.7 million project from 2017 included work that occurred in Green Meadow Elementary, Red Mill Elementary, Goff Middle School, Transportation, and the ground shop. So the final cost reports for all except the ground shop has been filed as of, it was filed at the end of November. The ground shop, that final cost report is being processed, however, it doesn't generate state aid, so not quite as urgent to get that in. But the report I've provided for you shows that the cost, the total cost in Phase 2 that we reported are just slightly over $13.4 million. And what I did in order to estimate the aid for you is we said typically about 95% of construction that is done is allowable for state aid. So I took that $13.4 million, multiplied it by the 95%, came up to 12, almost $12.8 million. We applied our aid ratio to that, which is currently 72, 73.2%. So I'm estimating the aid on Phase 2 to be $9.3 million. That will be spread out over the next 15 years. And so starting next year, we'll get about an extra $624,000 in building aid associated with Phase 2 of the project. So that's why, you know, we have these construction meetings every week, and we're on them all the time to finish these projects because our aid is dependent on getting these final cost reports in, and we had until December 1st in order to start to generate the aid. So we pushed on that, we got it done, and we'll start to see that aid next year.
And that concludes our report. All right. Forgot our public forum. Residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Greenwood Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and/or operations of the district, other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to citizen concerns during the public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the president or the superintendent will contact the individual in the near future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and should state for the record their name, address, or affiliation with the district of business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the visitors' form is not deemed to be an open form. The board president will conduct the form for the orderly and efficient operation of board business. In any, in addition, any remarks that may be considered defamatory, stigmatizing, or prohibited will be declared out of order. All comments shall be limited to five minutes. Is there anybody that would like to address the board? All right. Discussion items.
We would like to inform the board and really ask for future approval of our, some of our members of our administrative team to attend an important learning conference sponsored by the American Association of School Administrators. This will occur after school. That's out this year, from June 26th to June 28th. The AAS Learning 2025 Conference is an opportunity for us to learn about what best practices are occurring in districts across our country. It's an opportunity for us to collaborate as a team around some of those best practices and to network with other districts. We are hoping to join the AASA Learning 2025 Initiative. This is something that has been promoted by Questar Bosse's and Dr. Cruz, who is the, will be becoming the president of the AASA very shortly, within the next few months. And this is part of an effort that Questar is trying to promote to involve other districts as far as regional professional development. So this will be a good opportunity for us. Questar Bosse's team, including Mr. Buno, attended last year. It fits with our goals to learn about some of the, again, practices across the country in schools that are addressing such issues as future-oriented learning, going beyond academics, and supporting students in their social-emotional learning, and really kind of ties in nicely with our goal. So we wanted to invite any board members that may want to come. You are welcome to come if you have the time and have the interest, and you want to let us know, we will sign you up as part of the team. We're going to be looking for some teacher leaders to join us, as well as some of our principals and school-level administrators. We haven't done this really ever, other than the school boards conference, and one of the things I would like to do now that COVID is over is promote my own professional growth, as well as the growth of my leadership team.
Thank you.
Any questions? Looking for a blessing to put it on agenda to approve our attendance at a future meeting.
Do you need that, a formal motion?
No, just a kind of a verbal, and we'll put on a formal resolution approving our attendance at the conference. I should be doing that as the superintendent. Sure. Okay. We will get everything in that we need for registration, and we will bring a resolution once we confirm who's attending to the board. I appreciate the support.
All right. Regular business, approval of programs for resident children with disabilities. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education of the East Greenwood Central School District hereby approves programs for resident children with disabilities. We would need a motion to accept. Mr. Don, Cheryl, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Yes. I know there's a resolution to approve. We had a presentation.
Last, right, last meeting, we had a presentation for the board goals in the strategic vision for 2022, 2023. Input was put in, the corrections and additions and input that folks submitted were added. So at this point in time, I'm looking for a motion to accept the 22, 23 board goals and strategic vision. If I could have a motion. John, second, Emily, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much.
This is a resolution that is done annually regarding our tax collection, and I'm going to defer to Mrs. Wager on this.
Thank you. So our tax collection period this year went from September 15th to October 15th without penalty, and then from October 16th to October 31st with a 2% penalty. At the end of the tax collection season, we reconcile all of the taxes, and those taxes that have not been paid are then turned over to the county, and we, the county makes us whole. That usually happens in February, and the county at that point adds another 7% interest to it and releavies the taxes. We had about $2.1 million uncollected this year. That's typical. One thing we did do this year, as a matter of convenience for our residents, is we offered the ability to make online payments, either in the form of e-check or by credit card. So that was helpful and convenient to people, and we also had the lockbox as well. So this is typical, typically about the amount that we have to turn over every year.
So do we get the money from the county, and then the county levies it to their taxes?
That's correct. So we'll get the money from the county. They make us whole with the 2% penalty, not the 7%, but then the county turns and releavies the taxes onto residents' property taxes.
Great. Is this, is this mostly residents, or are there businesses in here too?
It's a combination. Okay. It's a combination of, yeah. It's mostly, I would say it's mostly residential, and it's typically the same every year.
All right. Thank you. Do you have any other questions? Need a motion? Michelle, Joanne, all in favor? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to committee reports, and we'll start with Marissa.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. I had posted the meeting minutes from November 18th for the Appendix D Committee. I just want to touch on a few highlights. Our committee had reviewed the club advisor positions that have not been filled this year. We had several, the music choral director at Columbia High School, interact club at the high school, AV director at Goff, guitar club at Goff, coding club at Red Mill, yearbook club at Red Mill, and then the AV director at Janay. Our committee is discussing the possibility of using some of the unused monies from Appendix D on those clubs unfilled to support and pay new clubs or clubs that have been in unpaid status for quite some time. We have received two new club proposals. One is for the Bell Top TV Morning Program, and then the second proposal is for an archery club. And our committee had decided to reach out to all of our unpaid club advisors and have them submit proposals as well, so we can look at each club that's either looking to be new or that's currently unpaid, and see what we can do to potentially provide payment to them at a future date. Our next meeting day is going to be Monday, December 12th, so I'll have another report at a future board meeting. I also provided a staffing report and just a couple highlights on that. Our assistant transportation first, assistant transportation supervisor candidate is working diligently on getting their SBDI certification, and we are hopeful to move forward with that board appointment in January. So they just have a couple of more items to finish, and then that SBDI certification should be issued.
Thank you. With those unfilled positions, I know a couple of them I heard were audiovisual.
Yes.
Did we lose anything at the schools? Did we miss out on anything because we didn't have anybody in those positions? Are we losing out on things?
So we're not necessarily losing out on things. I know Mr. Grignan himself has been helping out as the AV director, and I know similar situation at Goff. So we're just, it's not necessarily a teacher that's running it, but the club monies are for EGTA members to do, but Mr. Grignan has been kind enough to make sure that we're still running that.
What about the yearbook in Red Mill? Because that's, that's a big one.
Yep. Excellent question. I spoke with Helen Skoloshy. The PTO has been assisting with the yearbook over the last two years. This club in particular has had no interest from Red Mill since 1920.
Well, at least they're getting one. That's important. Okay.
2019, 2020, not 1920.
Yeah, 2019, 2020. 2019, 2020. 2019, 2020. Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Marissa.
You're welcome.
Linda.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. We had a health insurance review committee meeting on this past Monday, December 5th. We discussed a couple of items. As you may have heard in the news, CDPHP has been negotiating with St. Peter's Health Partners and their parent company, Trinity Health, and there was possibly going to be a disruption. They were not coming to agreement, but I'm happy to report that we did find out at the end of last week, they came to agreement. So our members that have CDPHP insurance will see no disruption, no change in their insurance whatsoever. We're still dealing with St. Peter's Health Partners and their doctors. So that's positive. We also talked about some member co-pay issues that we became aware of as we transitioned from Blue Shield to Highmark, and we've been dealing with that over the last couple of months. I did receive a report from Highmark as to, and there were 23 members that we identified that had issues with co-pays, the wrong co-pays being charged. It turns out that it is a coding error between the providers and Highmark. So Highmark has been having an education, educating the providers on the new coding system, the proper coding system. Those that have been affected, we've reached out to Highmark, and Highmark informed us that they are issuing refunds to the providers, and the providers, we've talked to our members, are issuing credits to our employees, the members. It might turn up as a credit on their account when they go to their next doctor visit. We did, as we discussed, as we went along, it sounded really great, and then as we discussed in the committee, there were still some concerns, still some things that have not been settled. So we are in the process of reaching out to all 23 of those members right now that we know had an issue, and just to make sure, to ensure that their, their issue has been resolved. And we also have encouraged through the union representatives, all employees, if they have an issue, to reach out to us, and we'll handle it individually. But we have seen a definite decrease in the problems. Other than that, there were no other topics. Are there any questions?
Linda, what if a member, you know, one of the people who have the plan, doesn't ever go back to that provider? Will they be issued a refund from the provider?
They should be. So, you know, it's, it's a little tricky because the way they explained it to us is that the employee, the patient, gets an explanation of benefits, and then when revision was made, they should have received a revised explanation of benefits. That's not always the greatest because not everybody looks at that, but anyone, and that's why we had this meeting, so that our union representatives can talk to their, to their members and encourage them that if they had any questions about any of their recent office visits, they could either contact us or contact their provider, and we would assist them with that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't feel like it's a refund in that. It's not appropriate, I think, for the provider to hold those funds that are issued, that should be to, to that member.
Right. I don't say that our employee might not have to reach out. I'm not sure of how the providers handle it, but that is the process, that it goes back to the providers.
So Linda, it's not a question, just a comment. That's, I'm very impressed that we reached out to those 23 members. That's, that's great customer service, and that's very appreciative.
Yeah. When we started realizing there was still an issue happening, we decided it was probably best to handle it that way. So, thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Right. Sure. So we had a social-emotional learning committee meeting on November 17th. Again, the minutes are posted, but just a couple of highlights. We did have two new parent members as part of our committee, which I think is going to add a nice perspective, you know, for that group. We also have been having a subcommittee that's been looking at possible different curriculum that we may be able to adopt, K-12, and I think as, you know, that committee has been looking into that, we started seeing more and more that there's a lot of really great work going on within the district around SEL, and that maybe, you know, purchasing a curriculum, a canned curriculum, may not be the right way to go. So we're kind of looking at what are the things that we're already doing, and maybe we can be more intentional in making sure that what we are doing is aligned to the New York State SEL benchmarks, the Castle Five competency areas. So we're still, you know, investigating that, and there are, that group has narrowed it down to three specific curriculum that we are going to, you know, take a look at. We're also in the process of putting together a needs assessment for staff, which is going to help guide our future professional development and, and different needs that we may have in areas of focus. And then lastly, I've, I've been doing a little bit of research and meeting with some different groups of thinking about possibly bringing in some maybe outside organizations to support, you know, support us next year in terms of, you know, rolling out something universal. And then also, we've been, I know, talking a lot about, you know, including more restorative practices into our code of conduct, so possibly working with an organization to, that really does some really, you know, high-level quality training around restorative practices with our schools.
Great. Thank you.
Our committee on global education met just yesterday, so I don't have the minutes prepared yet, but I can give you a verbal summary. Last year, we talked to the board and the community about the fact that our committee was focused on practices related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. We've been working over the course of the last three years, I believe now, on looking at our policies, also making sure that we take steps to be a welcoming educational community for our families, looking at issues within the curriculum that may contain cultural bias, and we have broken into subcommittees working in those three areas. One of the initiatives I spoke to the committee about last year that we are very excited about is a one-school district, one-book initiative that we plan to roll out in February around themes that relate to diversity and inclusion. There's a group within the committee that selected a book, and the idea is, you may be familiar with one book, one school, this will be one district, one book, and it is basically everybody in the school district, all seven schools, administrators, employees, community groups. We've got the public libraries involved that serve each of our towns are all going to be involved in promoting this book, which is entitled Elephant in the Room. It's a fictional book intended for kind of the middle school age, but is appropriate as a read-aloud for the elementary school level, and certainly would be appropriate for the high school level. We talked about logistics and planning yesterday, and we were very encouraged by the fact that Mr. Mahar, who's here, arranged for two of his teachers to come to the meeting, who'd been neatly involved in the Bell Top One School One Book Initiative for a number of years, and they kind of outlined some of the steps that we need to take to get organized, put together a calendar of activities for the schools, and how we could go about making sure that this was a positive activity that encouraged engagement, but didn't get to the point where we were prescribing curriculum activities that everybody had to do in their respective classroom. So we're organizing for it. We're anticipating that we will have a booth at Winterfest to promote the event. We've had our business teacher at the high school has offered to have some of her marketing classes assist us with developing materials. We plan to promote some artwork through our art department. Had a meeting with the principals this morning to discuss this. They are working with us on how we can procure some of the books. They're going to be asking for some assistance from the PTO, and we're going to be asking for some donations towards the books, but this is something that we're really excited about. And the reason we're doing this is because we've come off of COVID, and there's been a very challenging period of time, not only in which we've been worried about people becoming sick, but also we've had a lot of division throughout our country and our state around these topics of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And we want to approach DEI in a way that brings everybody together in a positive way. We want to promote a culture of acceptance and inclusion, and we think this is one small way, but kind of in a grand way, that we can do it across the entire community and the district. And we're in, still in the early stages of planning it. We thought we would run this program from February, after the February break through March. That gives us enough time to plan it, gives us enough time to get the books. Again, we're involving the public libraries, we're going to be involving and asking some businesses to get involved in this, and that we think this would be a very positive thing to have all 4,000 of our students reading the same book, discussing the same book, and hopefully all 800 or so of our employees and many, many members of the community. It's, it's getting off the ground very positively. And that's basically what we discussed. More to come.
Thank you. Table motions, there are none. All business? I have a couple of things, but does anybody have any, any other business? You know, I'll start with the oldest one I have. It's the Columbia High School vestibule. It's supposed to be completed in October, was last.
Yes. There have been significant delays in some components of that project that are necessary to make the doors lock.
Yes.
And I don't know the status of that right now. I don't believe that they have been received yet. We were planning on getting that equipment in time to be able to do it over the holiday break, but I don't think as of today, they are in yet.
They are not in yet. The plan is the new delivery schedule is, is supposed to be that they will be in so that that can be completed over the holiday break, but it's been delayed before. So at this point, that is the plan, is to be able to complete that over the holiday break, but it will depend on.
So that's the hardware coming in. But we're going bigger too, correct? Yeah, what's happening is when we push the wall out to make the vestibule bigger, you're going to have more than one door there now. And that second door will automatically lock as part of the security system without these, these mechanisms that we need, the parts that we need to make that function.
Small parts, but a big impact on that.
Have we paid for that stuff yet?
We haven't paid for it. No, no, it's been ordered.
Okay, thank you. And cameras on the buses? I know that was delayed.
That's delayed just until January.
Okay.
Dr. McLean had a meeting with the representative from bus patrol. I think Thanksgiving week and they did an assessment of our buses. And they are ordering parts and they said they would start the installation two weeks after the parts come in, which are expected this month. So they are expecting at this point to start the installation in January.
And is it going to be all 100 buses?
102.
102. Awesome. Great. Dr. McQueen, anything to add on that? Do you have anything to add on that?
We are very excited about bus control and the new and the grant for getting those cameras. They both are the external cameras as well to check when the stopper is out to see if the truck is going by the buses. One important thing is it's going to automatically trigger video to be set. The bus patrol will review it. Yet they believe it's a violation. They send it right to the local authorities and they can issue a citation should the local authorities confirm that it's a violation. But we're super excited also that we're getting all the interior cameras. They're more advanced cameras than we currently have. It's just part of the grant. We have to pay for any money. And for the first time, we're going to have the option to film live camera into a bus while it's on.
Awesome. Perfect. Thank you. Consent agenda? Anybody have any questions about the consent agenda?
So just a quick question on driver's ed. Is that what other districts are doing? They can't find people sort of doing it all remotely or are we unique to that?
I believe that we are really one of the only districts offering driver's ed right now because of the challenges around the driver's school. Right now, there may be a few other. Mr. Harkin, do you know?
Yeah, there's, there's just a shortage of teachers for driver's ed. That's why we have to take care of that. We're also one of the few schools that offers a five hour course outside of the YMCA. And pandemic, they shifted to parents teaching their children. They kind of kept that model. The insurance has been turned out and because it was becoming too much and the cost of the course, they had two or three heels in their collar like my teachers had to make it through the backseat to drove. Which is not feasible anymore.
Thank you.
So A through F, I need a motion to accept. Joanne, Michelle, all in favor? Thank you. New business? Remember having a new business?
Mark, I have someone. Mr. Gorka.
So under new business, I was thinking about the pandemic and the last couple of years and the impact on the district. And one of the things I would hope that we could do as a group, as a leadership group, was maybe have a workshop sometime in February or March to where we can discuss the things that we did that were right and also review some of the things that we, that weren't so right. That didn't go as, as planned. And I think it would be a great opportunity for the board to hear from the leadership team what their thoughts were. You know, I know you've told us it kept us up to date, but everything has been so disjointed. I, I think that if we could actually focus, because my concern is a, a couple of things. The country still doesn't have a clear path. I want to do if, if it ticks up again or we get something else. And I think that's a great opportunity to kind of plan for, you know, you hate to use the word mish, casualty incident, but that's really what it is. And, and that we have a system in place that if anything that impacts the district on such a large scale, that we kind of know what worked and didn't work. We don't have to revisit some of the things. I think it would be really good for the board to, to also have an opportunity to work as a team to discuss some of the direction for the future. I don't have a lot of confidence in New York State right now and its leadership in, in regards to the pandemic. And I want to be out ahead of that. I can think of a few things that I probably wouldn't do again or support as a result of it, knowing what we know now. And even if we can try to develop a vein to where we can really get some legitimate information and transfer that to our, our constituency and our staff. So I, I, if we could kick that around, if anyone else has any ideas on what we could discuss, but I think a midwinter workshop, we've had a lot of, a lot of work the last couple of years and some team building in term would be good.
Excellent. Thank you, John. Anybody else?
So I'm going to bring up John's favorite topic. Electric buses. So I, I'm aware of the demands that the, basically the nation is now putting, put on with reducing down our footprint. And I understand the buses. Are there other things that our school district's going to need to do in the next five, 10 years? You know, that have potential financial impact or any other impact on us? And maybe we can look at that just to kind of get ahead for a long-term, you know, budgeting and strategy process.
That's good. Thank you. That was a topic at the convention that they had a lot of demonstration, a lot of information. Myself and Mike actually spent some time on it and, and, and talking to a couple of the, the bus companies about it. And it is, there is a huge expansion. You're figuring charging stations and, and, and bringing the power in. And even the bus company said, you know, they don't know yet whether, you know, our, our power companies are going to be able to support it. Yeah. So, yeah, yeah, there is. There's, there's a lot of, of expense that.
And there might be building expenses too. And, you know, I know from our, our side, my work side, there's significant changes that might need to come into play on utilities and so forth. So just not sure if we have the same impact.
So you want this to be another topic that we discuss at this?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if we have somebody that can research it and figure out what we might change.
We've got a couple of ways. We've been getting some information. I've been participating in the Niskus Legislative Committee discussion of this. Dr. McQueen just went to a, a convention, a conference for transportation supervisors regarding zero emission buses. And I haven't had a chance to talk to her about that yet, but yeah, we could put together some information about what we need to make sure is on our radar regarding long-term, long-term issues like that in terms of expenses and planning.
Right, thank you.
Very good.
Since we brought it up, just to be brief, what my major concern with electric school buses is not the direction of going to electric power. It's unfunded mandates by New York State. I want to be really clear on that. Our buildings are falling down. Our students are suffering. And I just don't believe at this time massive unfunded spending forced on the local taxpayer is a real good policy. I would prefer, and maybe we can discuss as I, I'm really glad you brought this up because I, I did give this some thought afterwards as I'm doing some reading. Wouldn't it be more appropriate for districts to take their smaller fleet that's used on a daily level, whether it's your, your, your district vehicles, your pickup trucks and things like that? And start on that small scale and get out ahead of this rather than just slamming us when you don't have the infrastructure, our buildings, our, our carbon footprint for our 1940s buildings are bigger than our bus fleet. You know, so that's where my concern for our taxpayers goes. If the taxpayers vote for this, I could support it. But when New York State just puts their hammer down and doesn't care that, that what it costs the local people and on top of not getting the proper funding for our buildings and our grounds and our students, that, that's where my, my advocacy comes from. But it lets, I would prefer to look into how we transfer our, our everyday fleet on a smaller scale than, than just to be hammered with another unfunded mandate.
And I am worried that there might be building requirements as well.
Well, it's coming.
So then it's all, all unfunded at this point.
And it's great if they want to do it, give us the money to do it. I, I just, you know, but when, you know, the state of education, New York State is in the crisis right now and we're fortunate. I'm, I'm even advocating for the, the districts that really don't have the money and the students are failing terribly and their buildings are in 10 times worse shape than ours.
At a tune of $400,000 a bus?
For a large bus?
For a large bus, $400,000.
And they haven't told us how much does it cost to replace the batteries at that, when the batteries go? I mean, there's a lot to this other than just having electric buses.
That's why I was advocating for an indoor bus garage too. Oh, that Lake George building too. And we have that in our, in our documents for the, for the building condition survey.
Right.
Perfect. We put it in.
To cover the buses.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yes. Great. Perfect. All right. Any new business? All right. Anybody in the public wish to speak again? Or for the first time? All right. Second port form, anybody? No, we do have a need for an executive session to discuss some students and personnel concerns. We do not anticipate coming back. So thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. We appreciate it. So I'll need a motion to go into executive session. Michelle or Joanne, Emily, all in favor? Thank you, everybody.